Meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Blake is Peggy online. She was going to join. Uh, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second Jason.
Anthony beat you, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Um, so it's been moved and saying to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those same sign. Motion carried. Uh, moving on to informational items, uh, closed summer food service program review.
So basically, it's just some great news that everything went well and just as it says, it's just an informational notification to you. That the state and everybody liked our, how our summer food program worked out. Nothing more than that. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Looks like Peggy is on now.
Okay, thanks Blake.
So if there's any other information. I'd be happy to answer, but it just basically tells you that we did what we were supposed to and met the requirements.
Any question? Thank you. Moving on to it is National Principals Month. And we would like to recognize our principals that are here, if they're here in the room or outside.
You want to grab them? They're coming, they're coming. You just stand right up front and center.
Alright.
What do you feel like?
So first off, we'd like to, well, I'm just gonna.
You can go ahead.
Uh, like to honor. Excuse me, Jody Saban. Your first up? Thank you. Not in any order, but Kevin's next, Kevin, thank you. I tried. Uh, I don't see Eric LaRaz, but want to appreciate his work. Crystal Cole, thank you. And then of course, we have David Funk, who's not here tonight.
Powderpup.
He's at Powderpup. Keeping everybody in, in charge, Brian Bailey. He's in Kansas. And then I mentioned Eric LaRaz, so I appreciate your guys' effort.
What you guys just say, which school you're, are you work at?
Which school?
Hey, elementary. Carefree.
How's most cool?
Alright, have you told your certificate tab?
I already gave Michael, is it? Did you lose it already?
Are they stuck together?
It's just a frame.
Didn't I get it?
No, you, you just tucked it behind.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Um, so next item will be. Um, any board, uh, that public comment, is there anybody that would speak?
I would like to make a public comment.
Oh, okay. Do you want, would you like this, can you sign that real quick? Um, there we go. Okay, so.
Yes.
Hello? Oh, okay. Okay, so, uh, you may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for hearing public comment. If this is the case, we ask that you prior to the start of the meeting, sign in. Noting the topic you intend to address the board. Come to the microphone, where there's no microphone, but this is the table. Um. See, and state your name. Do not reflect adversely on the political or economic view, ethnic background, character or motives of any individual. And please keep your comments concise, non-emotional and brief. Uh, we will go for three minutes per person that we. Three minutes per person for a total of twenty minutes.
Do you want to move this microphone over to the table?
I, I think they're, they've been picking up really well and so.
Okay.
We haven't had any problems.
Okay, first up is Maggie Elliott.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Elliott, I am a alumni of the Prosser School District, I graduated. I'm here today to commend the school board on the consideration of the new health lesson plan. In regards to interdu- introducing concepts of sexual consent, gender identity and sexuality to the district's curriculum. And it is my opinion, it will benefit students. I believe that it takes a village to raise a child. And I am proud that Prosser was my village. I will forever be grateful to the multitude of teachers, coaches, 4-H leaders and FA advisors. That poured an inordinate amount of love and support into my personal and professional development. I feel inherently tied to this community. When I was twenty-seven years old, I fell in love with an incredible person. Her name is Katie. I didn't know that I could fall in love with a woman before I met her. But when I realized that I had this capacity, it was as if the world crystallized in a single moment. And I saw that I could have a beautiful person, a beautiful future with a very special person. It's been among the most powerful and profound experiences of my life. And I still consider sometimes that it was a mercy that I had this recognition in my late twenties. At this point in my life, I was an adult, I was comfortable in my own skin. I had two degrees and was enrolled in a career that I found powerful and fulfilling. I believe it would have been difficult to come out in Prosser, in school. I know I was buried, pain and hurt. And I do believe that this is rather tragic. That I, in some part of me, is partially thankful that this piece of me was tucked away. Because of my upbringing in my hometown. You may question why this curriculum was valid, is, why this curriculum is valuable and why integrate it now. It is important because quite simply, the act of deliberate silence can be weaponized as shame. The recognition of gender identity and sexual orientation, as noted in these plans, puts these concepts into the light. It is important now because while progress has been forged in recent decades. It is a reality that LGBTQ people today still navigate prejudice. When you are LGBTQ in Central Washington, you are a spectacle because you are different. You are constantly assessing whether or not it is achievable to hold your partner's hand, whether it is safe. We live in a world where people feel perfectly justified in casting repulsive slurs. And while visceral hate is rewarded in politics. It is a tenuous time. And this curriculum is important because it gives recognition that we as an LGBT community exist. We are here, we are your children, we are your grandchildren, we are your neighbors and friends. We are smart, talented people who want to help our communities grow and thrive. Thank you for taking this step, thank you for dissolving the weapon of silence by introducing this health plan. And thank you for your efforts to serve as a village to help this community grow and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Uh, next up, Linda Kurt.
My name is Linda Kurt, I'm a registered nurse since nineteen eighty and recently retired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. After working full-time for forty-three years as an RN. And twenty-two of those years was working in Prosser School District as one of the district registered nurses. Um, I was a member of the Prosser School District Sexual Health Curriculum Committee that worked an entire year, including summers. To prepare the PSD sexual health lessons that are being recommended for adoption by the Prosser School District. For tonight. The committee reviewed numerous sexual health curriculums. After much consideration of the various programs and in some cases creating our own health lesson. The committee feels the lessons presented tonight are the best options for the success, health and mental well-being of our students. These lessons meet the OSPI guidelines. For the comprehensive sexual health education, please adopt these lessons that the PSD Sexual Health Committee has recommended.
Thank you. Uh, Kathy Rucklinger. Yeah, it was crossed out, I don't know.
Well, I'm here on a different subject, so. My name's Kathy Rucklinger. I don't know if you need the spelling. Anyway, I have a question here, I was brought to my attention that here in the last week, there was a drug overdose at the high school. And at that time, it seems like from what I've heard, a lot of it's grapevine, so I just picking straws. But I heard that, um, the teacher kind of stepped away, wasn't sure what to do. And so that brings up another question in my mind. Uh, do the teachers, are they required to have first aid training? And also. Are we gonna start having to have, what is it called, Narcan? In the individual schools, maybe we already do in the classrooms, I hope it hasn't got that bad, but things have changed a whole hell of a lot in the last few years. And it's really scary. And if so, um. Do you know where that child got the drugs, is something he brought from home, or is there a dealer in the school passing it out, selling it? On school grounds? If anybody knows that. And I know up in Grandview, randomly, they bring in drug, uh, drug dogs. And go in there and hopefully check and catch whoever's doing that kind of crap. Cause uh, I know it's a problem in a lot of places, really sad, we're in a different world now. And so I'm just curious, what kind of training do the teachers have? Is it required? You know, cause apparently ambulance had to be called in, they saved the kid, he didn't drop dead, thank God. Um. So that was just my comments, cause I'm, I'm just, I'm grateful my kids aren't in school anymore, but I've got seven grandkids. Well, they're not all in school now anymore, they're in Air Force and college and everywhere else, but down in Tri-City's going to school and you know. You hear this little crap come up here and there and stuff and it scares the heck out of me, so. I was just curious. If you know it was a dealer in school, if they've been caught. Which, neither my might know still not. And what kind of training the teachers have to handle these situations?
As far as I know, I think every teacher is, does have a CPR card, but I'll let Kim Indiana handle that.
So we can, yeah, first aid and CPR, so the average teacher is not required to be first aid and CPR trained, but we have multiple people in every building that are, all of our administrators, our health services personnel. CTE teachers are required to be trained.
Security.
Security, anybody who coaches, so in a building like this with maybe a hundred people working. There's probably forty people that are trained in first aid CPR at any given time. So, um, there were plenty of people on hand that are, that are able to help in an emergency situation. I, I, I'm not going to speak specifically to the student because that's a privacy issue. But, um, we definitely, um, have, uh, there is a rise of drug availability in our community. And, um, access, kids have access. And it isn't hard probably for them to get it. And we do have Narcan on site here and at the middle school.
In addition to the, what you respectfully said at the beginning, you kind of had had some hearsay kind of gossip. I do want to assure you that the topic about the teacher stepping back, that was not the case. One of our teachers did CPR in partnership with, um, another staff member, another employee. Until the, um, medics arrived and was passed over in a proper way. And did everything in their power and, and respectfully and with honor and dignity, saved that young person's life.
Good to know. Alright, thank you.
Thanks Kathy.
We have heroes among us here. We need them.
Uh, next up is Elise Means.
So I'm going to be speaking to the new health lessons and I wouldn't say good evening to all of you. Um, my name is Elise Repunz Means and I reside at thirteen zero fourteen South fifteen thirty-eight PRSW Prosser. I have lived in this community for a total of more than fifty years. I began my education within the Prosser School District in August nineteen sixty-eight. As a first grade student at Witstrand Elementary. And I graduated from Prosser High School in June nineteen eighty. My public education in Prosser prepared me to late, later earn both the bachelor's and a master's degree from Washington State University. I'm a wife. I've been married, happily married to my husband Mike for thirty-seven years. I am a mother and a grandmother. I'm a lifelong member of Prosser's oldest church. Which is the Prosser United Methodist Church. And I'm a longtime community volunteer. I'm also a former, former public school teacher. And currently am honored to serve as, as director of the Prosser Historical Museum. I have carefully read, reread and read again the new health lessons. That will come before you later this evening. In my opinion, the lessons are accurate. They've been thoughtfully authored. And I believe they will be of benefit to students within the Prosser School District. And I believe that they should be approved. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you, Elise. Anybody else? Like to speak? Like anybody show up online? Okay, thank you. Alright, moving on, student representative reports.
I'm the only one here, um, just hoping this would go a little longer and I get some backup, but, uh, that's okay, um. So, just some basic stuff and then I'm going to touch on some other things that are more, um, pertinent. Um, so Pink Weeks this week, so far as of the last count, which I think was yesterday, I don't think we got numbers today. Um, we raised fourteen, fourteen hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents, um, for Coach Silva, our goal is five thousand dollars. Um, and the juniors and freshmen are in the lead. Um, not a big fan of that, but that's okay. Um, money is money. Um, girls soccer made the playoffs, um, and they beat, uh, Othello, one nothing, um, I think that was yesterday.
Yeah.
Um, and so they're playing Seala tomorrow, um, in Seala at five. Um, right now Powderpup's going on, juniors versus seniors, I really want the seniors to win, but I'm cautiously optimistic. Um, there's a blood drive at the high school on Friday, November third, um, if you can, please come, uh, give blood. Um, I don't know if this was brought up in a previous meeting, I haven't been here for a while, but the track's done. That's all I have for that, um, I did want to touch on a few things. Um. I think that everyone who came and spoke today, you all brought up. Sex ed or about the opioid, um, epidemic that's like this country. Um. I had some similar concerns, um. As Kathy did, um. I'm more worried about the fact that this isn't a one-time occurrence. It's happens, it's going to happen. It might be happening right now, we don't know. Um. But it's, it's a problem, it's been a problem for many years and it's only getting worse. Um. And it's not a matter of can we stop it, it's a matter of how do we help once it happens? There's not a lot that we can do to stop people from tainting these substances. Which is horrible, it's horrible, the regulated medications, um. And it's just, I want to know if there's more planning that's going to go into this because I don't think it's about prevention. I think it's a problem of intervention when something does happen, like what we seen last week. Which I think was handled pretty well, given the, given the circumstances, um. I also wanted to bring up with that, that I know you raised. Um. As a senior, someone who goes here almost every day, um. I'm going to tell you right now, it is extremely easy to get anything and any, everything that you want to get. You just have to know the right people or know a person who knows a person. It's really hard to try and find one person who knows all that. Um. Everyone has a. Knows a. Um, so it's not that there's one person who just suddenly started doing this, it's, it's a trend, it's a problem. Um. And it all really comes down to see something, say something. Um. But it's, it's not just the one person showed up after, it's been going on, whether you want to buy marijuana or their illicit drug, um. There's someone. Whether it's someone in the high school or it's someone in the community who's willing to sell to children, which I think is just about the epitome of evil. But I digress on that, um, touching on the sex ed, I just wanted to thank everyone who came up and spoke, um. I don't know, maybe it's because I'm from a generation that's I hope grown to be more accepting of issues when it comes to sexuality and, um, personal identity. But, um. I really hope that you guys approve this, I think that we spent a lot of time on it. And I think that it's something that we need, whether you have personal reservations or not, I understand. But I really want everyone who's going to vote on this, um, to really look at your hearts, look at your morals, not your beliefs, morals. And know that this is the right thing. Know that it's something that we need. Um, sometimes it's something we're begging for, some people. Um, people just want to be included. And that's all I ask, and that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, Noah, I do have one question for you, and I've always wondered this. Uh, during Pink Week, you know, the, you say it's juniors, freshmen, seniors, sophomores. How do they raise the money? What does it take to bring that in?
Um, so I know that throughout the day, um, each teacher either has, actually I think they have both, they have a red can and a white can. Red this year is seniors and sophomore, senior sophomore, something like that, um, and then vice versa, um, with white. And then bring in, you put it in your respective, um, colored box. And then I believe its leadership comes around at the end of the day and they collect each one and they put them into buckets and they total up who's winning in each one and then all the money gets pulled together, um.
They also did last night at the volleyball match and I know they did at the soccer match. They did Miracle Minute where they just, they read about Coach Silva and about collecting the money. And then they went through the stands and collected money, I didn't know what the color buckets were, I put my money in the red bucket. If that helped you, congratulate. I'm sorry.
I won.
Sorry, I would have put it in the white bucket, but their red bucket was right there. Um, so they were collecting money last night as well and at the soccer game as well, so I think they're.
Friday at, uh, at the assembly.
Yes, yes. The kids do a great job collecting money.
Anyone wants to come put money in a.
Which I know ultimately a lot of times come from parents, but they do, they're collecting in the Mustang period, right?
I, I think it's throughout the day because I know I've seen them in first period, like it, it, it's all throughout the day, I think, um.
Teachers, I know teachers get money, I know.
I know there's a lot of controversy right now between the, uh, English department about who's going to raise the most money and who's giving the best rewards if you raise money.
That's, that's some, some of the best competition to get fundraisers to be successful.
Thank you, Noah, I appreciate that. Uh, moving on to action items, is, uh, action item number one is the city of Prosser and Prosser School District facilities shared agreement.
So, we've been working on this for quite a while. This is our community partnership that I've been so, um, working on. We did, um, happily come to a nice agreement that in all intents and purposes, no money is going to exchange hands in our partnership. That is the use of the city swimming pool and the use of our security officers being able to use the firing, uh, center for practice. The use of our parks and stuff for Little League Baseball and what does somebody call it, heart attack basketball in the old Prosser gym when the older people play, all of that. So we've just really, and we've really, um, worked on that partnership.
That's what I call it.
That's why I looked at her when she said that, cause everybody knows when Deanna says.
Slow break basketball, but.
Um, so we're just really proud of this agreement, it took us a little while to get all worked out, to protect both entities. Um, that's, it's very important that we do this, but if you've got to know me a little bit, this is what I'm really passionate about, about bringing our entities together. And the only piece that's really amended since you saw this last is we finally got the training for the firing. Uh, for the practice for our security officers for their training. And this, oh, and this was approved by their city council meeting at their last meeting. If, so that we do approve it.
So I know we just passed the.
Gap training.
That.
Yep.
Piece, um. The, um. Oh goodness, the gun range is not listed.
In this one, but this, this is kind of the culmination of all of that. The one piece that came into here was we have a combo swim teams. And so we had to work through, um. If, for example, um, one of our, our joining teams pulled out. How would we compensate and, and, cause there's kind of some bargaining going on, what Sunnyside would pay, what Grandview would pay, if one of them pulled out and and would there be a financial part on our part if one of those were not paying their portion, cause they do pay a fee to the city for that combo work, so that took a little bit of it. And then because there's two separate agreements, we could also talk about you're sharing this and we're sharing that, so.
Um, I have, my other question real quick was on the swimming pool. It, un- unless I misread it, but so please let me know if I did. It said use of the old uh, locker rooms or whatever, is, is that even still?
Oh, yeah. Oh, the, the original.
Yeah, the old.
The original, oh, yeah. Everything in that.
School.
Change, use the bathroom, the. You just go in the new building and then it's, it's still there, that I've heard you that.
Okay.
It's a functioning place. You can take your five-year-old there in a hurry during the swimming.
Okay. But not the new.
For the swimming?
Yes.
I bet that's because it's, um, open here. The new building is, there's a roof, but it's open here.
Oh, I see.
The older one still is open here, but I think it has more insulation because that's where the all the equipment to run the pool is, I think that's insulated for the winter.
That was my only other question. Anthony, you have any question?
Nope.
Peggy? Jeannie?
No, I'm satisfied with it.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the city of Prosser and Prosser School District Facility Shared Agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and you are going to recuse yourself. Been used, it's been moved and seconded to approve the city of Prosser and Prosser School District Facility Shared Agreement, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Oh, you didn't? Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Motion carries.
I think I did.
I, I thought I heard, but it wasn't. Okay, moving on, uh, the MEP and multilingual, multilingual education program contracts.
You want to take this? Is Eric online? Can you see Eric?
I do not.
Uh, so I spoke to Eric about this because I also had questions. Um, I know that one of the agreements is to bring in a science person from the ESD to support. Um, a teacher who's, uh, needs some, so, air, support in the area of science. I knew one of our newer teachers. And so, uh, he's using some migrant funds to pay for that, so that's the ESD contract and then, um. A proposal number two is the. Should take this one. That ramble. Oh, uh, yeah, and, uh, that is a leadership company that he said is going to come in and work with students. Um, to help implement some of our goals, but it'd be migrant students specific. Um, to help implement some of our goals, but it'd be migrant students specifically because it's migrant funds. Um, and so those are a couple of different things that he has. He's been working on.
These are funded through migrant funding.
Yeah.
Both of both of the items on.
Not not that I know of, not that I remember. I'm sure there would be. I I wondered about that as well cuz it's is very limited information. Um, so.
I will share that Mr. Ramble met with me in my office and I had spoke with him about his services. Um, I also worked with Mr. Ramble and Grandview when I was there. Um, I think to um. Uh, he's what we're working on, work for it would be great to invite him to talk with this is just an introduction if you would like. I I support his work, but I think for you, it might be best to for you to hear that.
Yeah, so I mean, if you um, this is something that would be work, obviously a strategic plan is long term. So if that's one that you want to table, that certainly.
With the board's approval, I um, the E S D on the first one, the one thousand and twenty dollars, they're waiting for um. My response on that and this comes to you, if at all possible, we would be able to divide them. And if that one is acceptable for the science to approve that one and we could table the second one.
We want to table the.
With Kim's further information, I'm confident. I think you have provided good information.
Yes, and so I just took kind of sure that he's about empowering. Um, the young people. He has a great story to tell on his life and upbringing and what he's done and we've had students. Um, work through the Prosser system and belong uh. Quote graduate from his leadership program that are now at um commu colleges and colleges um based on his leadership. His goal really partners quite well with the avid program. He's about taking the possibly first graduated of family or somebody who um. May not have had the leadership and support and he walks alongside them and his foundation then supports that work. And so forth. I I think you would be very pleased and confident with his work. Unless you would like to see him further.
He also works with Thrive.
Yes, he's on the thrive board with me as well. Thank you, Jeannie.
Maybe we can schedule him for a work session.
We could do that in November.
Yeah, that works out in December. Explain a little bit more about what he does. It's good stuff. Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve the MEP multilingual education program contract.
Anthony Beach again.
Okay.
It's been with it's been moved and seconded to approve the MEP and multilingual. Education program contracts. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, new health lessons.
So the the lessons, we just made a few modifications based on the suggestions from the last meeting. To the lessons, but other than that, they're the. There, those are the minimal changes that were made. Just a reminder that if any parent chooses for their student not to participate, they can. Um, sign a form and sign out a part or all of the lessons. Um, there's no requirement for them to review them prior to like there is for the HIV and AIDS lessons. Uh, uh, I did get a very nice letter of support, Lisa, that Lisa forwarded to me from Lisa Galbraith, uh, who's a. Uh, O B G Y N, lives in our community, very supportive of the lessons. And um, I appreciate Linda coming and speaking to the committee did. These people came all during the summer and we really did work for quite some time. To come to where we are to not only meet the requirements, but also meet the needs of our students. And then again, I would say that if a parent chooses for their suit not to participate, that is completely their decision.
And then the only other piece that I would like to add is looking at from a lens of the business of our district. We um are required to meet certain requirements from O S P I. And so um. Um, I'm looking to make sure that we meet the State Board of Education legal requirements. Of of the health curriculum that we have to offer and by allowing the opt out option, um, I would think that. Those who chose and I want to make sure that we understand that the uptown option is not a big deal. It's not like, oh, you don't wanna do it, so you're going down the line, you know, it's a very respectful. Wyatt thing, um, and people can go according to.
We've actually, we've been um. For as many years as I can remember, we are our regular sex education lessons, H V A N S, that's all done through parent preview night. Parents are able to come and preview any of the curriculum they choose and choose to opt their kids in or out. Um, there is a requirement in the law for H V A N S for parents to preview the information before they opt out. This new and this information there is not over. And most, uh, many of the lessons are really around that digital. Um, citizenship, being a good digital friend, making good decisions online, which there's a huge need for that in our community. Um, those standards actually in the in the standards didn't begin till like seventh grade, we actually pushed down those lessons down into elementary. Because kids are coming to school and third, fourth grade with cell phones and um they don't necessarily know how to. Use them appropriately and communicate with friends and build friendships appropriately um in a digital world. So some of our adults don't either, but. It's it's, yeah. Anyway.
Any question? I did have one, I know part of, you know, one of my original concerns with this was. Uh, one was do we. And I didn't see it in the curriculum, but um, taking, you know, using your camera and social medias to take selfies and stuff like that. How is that gonna be implemented into?
That's that's all part of the being like part of that's just like being a super digital, but that's also just part of what teachers are doing all the time. And a lot of times they've had questions about uh kids and pictures and all that, that we've been doing that, teaching that for a long time. Same thing with people like, well, there's nothing in here about abstinence or nothing in there about, you know, safe sex. That's part of our curriculum, has been part of it for a long time. These is, this just addresses the new part of the standards.
My only other quote, you know, concern with this is. I was, I've never been a fan of the flash and I've said that from the beginning. And so I'll just leave it at, leave it at that, so.
So you had a request about that particular lesson about the two stories at the end and we was and we actually pulled those out of the list.
They didn't, I appreciate that.
Which stories were that one?
Andy and.
I I remember those.
I can't remember the other one, Bradley.
I think they do was a good, it was a good idea. I just think the hell they were written was a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it just, it, I mean, I don't know, I'm in English one on one and I couldn't fully understand.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the new help.
I'll second Jason.
It's been moved and saying to approve the new health lessons. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Is Peggy on?
Yeah.
Yes.
She is, we have, she said she's gonna be calling in, we have somebody who's called in and.
Not sure what the, so the motion fails for lack of majority. Um, we we can bring this back at a future meeting. Is that how that?
Is Peggy calling into those?
I'm not sure.
Do we, can can we? I don't know, other than unless she chatted in on the.
But she did it via text to Selena, I don't know. Is that?
I just think it has to be equal across the board. We're gonna say Jeannie can call in and not be by Zoom.
Peggy can call, yeah, I'm not, I just have, I just don't think.
Could you have her call Jason or someone's phone please or mine? My work phone, you know. Have her call my work phone. Sorry for the delay, everyone, but we have to follow protocol. Peggy?
Yeah.
You're on. Okay, you're on speakerphone now.
Let's take it.
Okay, yes, I'm sitting, I'm listening and I'm watching and I'm saying, yes, yes, yes. And I'm texting for Selena, yes, yes, yes. So, yes. I vote, I approve.
We should probably do a roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Lisa? I am no. Peggy?
And Peggy is yes, Peggy is yes.
Okay. Jeannie?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
Peggy, I'm gonna go ahead and hang up.
All right, moving on to vouchers.
I'll make a motion, we um okay vouchers as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I did have one question, not regarding the expense. I thought that we had an insurance claim for an irrigation issue.
So I can, other than it was a a BK before Kim, but I'll tell you what I do know. Um, uh, some time ago, there was a large amount of our hand lines.
They were.
They were stolen at Witstrand. And this is the insurance claim and the money that came back. Um, for full transparency, the insurance company did not require us to replace like kind. Or like whatever, so we were happy to say that we got to purchase our sprinkler. Mechanism, for lack of better pipe, and sprinkler heads for the old Prosser High School, for our grass and so forth around it. So that will be the. The materials for the sprinkler system for around old Prosser High School. Nope, we'll have sprinklers in the spring.
That was my question, thank you.
Any other question? Hearing none, it's been moved and seconded uh to approve the vouchers as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
One quick thing, I I did see David Funk come in, so if there comes a time we want to record, he, I saw him come in, I didn't see him leave.
Mr. Funk here, can you hear us from the outside? No, he's not. Now he's gonna go hide.
That for him and give him his certificate and stuff that he's here.
Okay, moving on to item five is the second reading of policy and procedure sixty two seventeen electronic fund transfer. This is one we've seen multiple times. Any questions or comments?
Oh, sorry, it looks like in the procedure. And this paragraph isn't numbered, but there's it's like a little funky kind of typo and has a trade word next to it, but although it's kind of gibberish. And I I can show you.
Oh, yeah.
Here and then.
Okay.
Does it with a different word here.
Okay. Is it acceptable with the proper punctuation and things too?
Yes.
So if you could word that in the.
So I would, I have no questions. I would just suggest we take out the dicta and make the correct words.
Lena nodded at us. She got it.
I move to accept the policy and procedure with.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second re- second final reading of policy and procedure sixty two seventeen. Electronic fund transfer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the first reading of policy and procedures sixty nine seventy. Naming schools, facilities and teams and use of school mascot images or logos.
So we tried to um address the comments about a community member. And maybe not necessarily always having to do with education and that's the changes that you see in there.
So I I also have some comments and I'm I'm gonna freak say that it's because I had Mrs. Warner for an English teacher at Prosser High School. So our. Draft policy, um, the first paragraph is one sentence and I I think we should clean it up and add some comments and uh colon.
Okay.
So.
Can thank Wasda for that.
Yes, and then and then also in the procedure following that, we say for naming the new school, but then. And we're talking about facilities and the headline, the title of its facilities, and then we take facility down below, so I think for consistency and accuracy.
Make sure that we have both in both paragraphs.
And had I not had Mr. Donaldson and Mrs. Warner, I probably would have missed all of that.
Well, I missed it, I mean, I didn't have it, so.
Uh, we'll make those adjustments and present it to you next time.
Can we approve the first reading as uh recommended edits?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the first reading with proper grammar and vocabulary change.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and signed to approve the first reading of policy and procedure sixty nine seventy. With the um, with the edits mentioned, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on to. Consent items.
Good, so can I make a motion to um okay the consent items as uh presented?
You can, there is a slight. A slight edit that we wanted to mention. That I think is reflected in the updated agenda, but may not be updated in the previous version. Um, can I? Can I ask you to rescind that? Please?
And you hope, can, yes, I will take back my motion.
Thank you.
So when I was. When I was reading the minutes this week, there was an error on the October eleventh minutes. I directed the error to Selena and she has. Updated the minutes, they're accurate and it reflects who attended the meeting, who called the meeting, the board, the beginning of that meeting, we didn't have a quorum. We didn't vote on any matters, we did, we only did discussion items and then when um two other additional members. Arrived at the meeting, we didn't have a forum and then we took action and I thought it was important, the minutes reflected that and they have been changed to reflect that.
Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items as presented and putting what was corrected.
Thank you. I have a second. Been moved and seconded to approve uh the consent items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on to reports. Elise, it's up to you.
It's my turn.
Your turn.
Okay, um, so we just have our student enrollment for October. Um, we are forty six over what we actually budgeted for the twenty three, twenty four school year, so that's awesome. And we only had one withdrawal in October, so we're we're holding pretty steady. Um, we're working on year end reports, um, and it's going great, learning a lot. Um, from this mastermind over here. Um, and so we'll have our our year end report. Um, and so we'll have our, our year-end report, um, for board meeting in November.
Thank you.
So, I want, I, she's been quite humble here, um, and so I'm gonna call her to task here. They submitted the F-one ninety-six a day early. It was, um, it went in and it came, it did have a one error in the first submission, and they fixed the little problem, and it came back, and together, I think both Craig and DeLisa are glad to have each other, as they have, um, muddled through, um, some things and have really cleaned things up, and the processes are improving daily.
Right.
Good job. I have one question. Um, looking over the enrollment for October, I just wanna make sure my numbers are right. It looks, it looks like we have a, a net reduction of two uh, between the enrollment and those withdrawals. Uh, but when I go down to the district FTE enrollment, um, it looks like we're only down seven, it looks like we're down seven. I know there's a, I figured, but I wanted to ask.
So, that, as you know, there's a difference between the headcount and partial schedules and all that for the FTE, so there's a conversion, so they're not gonna really match.
And I'll explain that a little further. Um, some of the things that happened between September and October was our work within Graduation Alliance. So, Graduation Alliance is one of our alternative programs, and they start later as well as Running Start starts later in September, so when we gave you a September, it wasn't, um, we, it was bound that planned schedule, and then October becomes their actual schedule. So, an example would be that a student was planned to take fifteen or full load at Running Start, and then they only took a half let, partial credit, and then they came to us, or vice versa. The other one is when we're working with our special education students, um, we plan for them to attend all day, and then the year doesn't start off well for them, and so some of them may come a part of a day, so their head count still continues, but their schedule, um, the full-time equivalency that we get for them reduces.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Jan?
So, um, I have a few things. One is, uh, we met today with our cabinet, which is the four of us, and we are going to get started with our six through twelve science adoption. I sent an email out to staff today and administrators, I'll be looking for, um, a little teachers, parents, also hopefully, which we had in the past when we suspended our adoption before pre-COVID. Uh, some scientists from our community, we're also on that committee, so you can think of good representatives, feel free to send me names. Um, so that'll, we're gonna have our first meeting in January. And, um, work towards possibly maybe some pilot and some of those kinds of things, but we'll work with committee once we get started. It's, it takes quite some time. There's a lot more options. When we went through this process about six years ago, there was literally not a curriculum for the high school to adopt that matched the new NTSS standards, and that's because it takes like three to five years for them to rewrite a curriculum, and so the standards were younger than that, and so it just takes a lot of time, and you can't take a curriculum where they just went, oh, I'll just change a few things here and there, and we can make it match and say that it matches. Um, there was only two options for middle school, and at that time, we decided that we were not gonna move forward, which we didn't feel like we should spend the money and not really have really great options, and there's so much more, so many more options now. So, that's coming. Um, we are continuing with our MTSS, so multi-tier system of supports. Um, again, as we learn more, we'll come and we'll do a study session maybe in the spring when we feel like we know more. Um, we made some adjustments to our district team, because we originally went with the five principals and, um, special ed and, um, our migrant bilingual, but really, the district team is supposed to focus on what's called tier one, which is what we do for all students, and really migrant bilingual and special ed are really two tier, two tier or three supports. So, that's a different committee, so we learned some things, so we're going tomorrow, we'll be working, um, all day tomorrow, and we added some counselors um, and instructional coaches to our, um, to our group, so that should be interesting, it's been very helpful. Um, it's, and given us very specific support, so we can come up with a good system. Uh, we had ARC, we've had ARC training, our, um, K through eight, uh, uh, adopt committee, uh, sorry, K through eight ELA. And today, we had train, we had training this week, um, they come in and do embedded training in the buildings. Um, the middle school, this is for sure, they are doing a great job, they had to assess all their students individually, and other than a handful of students that either have been gone, or they, and it's, it's not a two-minute test, two-minute, it's an individualized assessment about their reading ability, so they've done really a bang-up job, um, getting that done to, done, done, it's not really done, but the initial assessment done, so that's going well. Um, and then I attended, I came to, they had the college and career day last week at the high school on Friday, and then, you know, you were speaking to the drug and al- drug alcohol, drug issues, drugs are, are readily available. Um, unfortunately for, in our community, um, but a few weeks ago, um, uh, based, I think, on the recommendation of our new social worker, Maria Ayala, she asked if they could have, um, presentations from Triumph and Sundown about the services they provide and what's available to students. Um, Sundown is one of only three facilities in the state of Washington that provide, um, recovery services for, for kids, and they came and did a presentation to every class. I watched, I think it was maybe with the juniors, and, um, I can tell you that's already had an impact on some of your classmates, so. It was really good, and it was, it was, it was really, um, timely, honestly. And that was a, that was an accident, but it was a perfect accident.
I, I wanted to add on, I, I think I forgot to mention this, um, we took the healthy use survey, the sophomores and the juniors did.
This week, yep.
Um, will you, I know that it's anonymous, do you guys use that, that we got back specifically relating to drug use to kind of?
So, that use, information is used for a lot of things. It's used for, one, it's, um, Thrive, that Thrive operates because of the results of that healthy use survey, and because there's a need, so that's why we get funding, um, and then it's also used for, to look at and see like what maybe, what are their services or things that we need that we're missing, what are those gaps? Where are we seeing like, gosh, in eighth grade, this looks, doesn't look so bad, but by tenth grade, they're not looking so good. So, what's happening between eighth grade and tenth grade, um, so, uh, the administrators disagree with that, the counselors, um, all of our mental health staff.
It takes a few minutes to get all the data back.
It'll be a while, yeah, a little while, and then we have access to that for the full length of time until they take the survey again, so. Yep, we have, we do full participation and help with the survey.
Any questions, Deanna? I have one, sorry. Um, I'm, um, the ARC curriculum. Uh, it's my understanding that there is more real-time data that we can look at versus waiting for these ass- assessments or the
Yes.
uh, school improvement plans, et cetera. Can we set up a schedule to kinda, that we could, that you could show the board?
Yes, I can show you some, I can show you, I can show you how many kids read at every level and every grade. And it's. Yeah.
K through five, right?
K through eight.
But they, they just, oh, so it's real time?
Because they've assessed them, so obviously, they're not putting in data every single day for every student, but they have a kind of a schedule where they see if a student is considered red or emergency, so they're, um, two or more grade levels below. They're supposed, they do individual conferencing and updating of that student information, they're supposed to do that every, um, every, they're supposed to update all students every two weeks, but they see those, they're supposed to see those students three times individually during the two weeks. If the student is yellow, so one grade level below, then they goes to work, see those students individually and conference with them, give them their power goals and things they're working on twice in the two, in the two weeks, and then if a student is ungradable, it's once, um, every two weeks, and, but they are supposed to be updating their data every two weeks. That's part of that learning process for the middle school and for the middle school, but I was looking, there's a whole part in there about, um, their reading engagement and their writing engagement, and, um, our, you know, and some of our elementary teachers did that last year, but that was one thing that we said, okay, if you guys wanna do this, it's okay, but that's, it wasn't essential to them getting into the curriculum, it takes three to five years to really implement. Most of our middle school teachers are already doing it. Um, and so, uh, they really, and in for middle school, that's what they teach, they aren't doing sci- you know, science and, and math and all that, they teach ELA, so, um, yeah, I can share, you let me know when you want me to, and because I'll have to do a little work, I just wanna make sure it's anonymous, because there's specific student information in there, but I can just print some reports to bring to share, so you can kinda see what it looks like, if that, if that helps.
I think it'd be kinda interesting to see if we could have, like, some more real-time data that we can look at, not just the, you know, the.
At the end of the year.
Yeah, at the end of the year.
No, I can bring, I can bring you.
End of the quarter or something, or?
Yep, um, the end of the try is coming up here in a few weeks, and so we could do, I could bring you kind of the, that doesn't really tie to the ARC data, so I don't know that that really matters, um, uh, but I wanna give the middle school a little bit of time, because they've done their baseline testing, whereas our elementary kids have been in there for two years. So, uh, how about the second meeting, well, I'm not sure what our November schedule is.
Said, uh, study session in November is on its normal time, and so study session December. Just the second board meeting, we moved to the week after Thanksgiving.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can, I could give it to you right now, if I could print it out, I mean, honestly, it's that accessible. So, you tell me when you want it, cause it's in there.
But we shoot for the first study session in December.
Okay.
Does that work?
I think that works. At one point, we talked about having teachers kinda rotating, month and a month, having different grade teachers, and I wonder if we could incorporate, maybe not at that meeting, but if they would like to, I'd like to hear from their teachers on a regular basis, how like new curriculum is working, just in general.
Yeah, we can.
That's a good idea, yeah.
We can work on that, that's an awesome, that's the purpose of a study session, right?
Yep.
Um, yeah, I can, um, I can have some, uh, ask for some elementary and some middle school and high school to be, come to that session.
Maybe English.
To share a couple minutes, that, that's our newest curriculum, we don't have anything really new outside of that, so.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think it was a big deal for us to pass that last year.
It was, and we spent a lot of money on it, so.
Let's hope it's making a difference.
Yeah.
I think the end.
Yep, I'll take that.
One for everybody. It's just my traditional, um, um, report, you have it in front of you, um, just getting on the high points, it's been, um, first thing I have to do to publicly and to those online with us today and to the school board, I thank you very much for instilling your trust and faith in me and offering me the opportunity to be your next superintendent, so, thank you. Um, so the voluntary stuff that's at the top, uh, I was in the tenth grade avid class, I have to tell you, um, I've got these most amazing, uh, thank you notes, and, um, they weren't canned. And what I mean by that, you could say the teacher, oh, the teacher didn't say write this, right? Um, and they were, they were very genuine, and, um, the school, the student section of the interviews, I have to say, they were probably some of the harder questions um, of what the students are expecting of me. Um, the legal stuff, I'm happy to say that our, um, work on our data security and stuff is wrapping up, and we're safe, and things are going well, so I'm really pleased about that. Um, met with Foster Garvey and Cory from DA Davidson on our levy requirements, we'll have a resolution for you for November. I have been working, um, I'll keep going, so we're, we did bus safety week last week, we've done principal appreciation this month. Um, took the principals and their spouses out to dinner last Friday at, um, Crosser House. I think we had a, and I'm happy to say we didn't talk shop all night, so it was really good for the morale and the soul, um, to where we're at. Um, this week, you're seeing them honored on social media, each of the principals, a little something that, um, we've talked to their school board or their schools about and gotten some quotes on them. Um, oh, Noah, have you looked at the app?
If not.
Okay, we're not quite done, but the right teacher's picture is with the right teacher for the right building, and I do want everybody to understand, if you click on the picture and say you want to send them an email, it doesn't tell you their email, it sends them an email with your information, you can write them a note, and it goes to their email through Thrill Share, which is our parent company of our website. So, if you look at the pictures, they're just about done, but staff's been working really hard, so we're getting close. That's, that, um, even though that's not just for you, Noah, that was one something that you brought up, so we do listen to you. Um, uh, I do wanna talk about the levy work. If there's anyone that would like to partner with me on this levy work, um, I'm, I've started this wheel, we're working for the hub and all of the pieces and the money and the communication and the, all the pieces, and I've been meeting with community members, and it's just going well. Um, we're gonna have some strategic uh, meetings in the public, whether they're at churches or go to the Bluebird Cafe and Bickleton, you know, our Clickitap County Partners and, and some different things, so we can work on that, so got some good mojo going. Um, that's really exciting. The surplus lot is cleaned, I don't know if you guys know that, but when you drive around the corner, it's been swept and it's clean, and we're getting that done. Um, the surplus storage, we're now moving to the old library, so we're still cleaning and doing, we will have one more piece, but it's now in one location, it's inside. For those of you, I've heard so many people who may be listening tonight about how the stuff always got left outside, and it just kept getting ruined, well, that's not the case anymore, it's inside, and, um, the track is done, hallelujah. Um, um, so it like, but it, it's truly done, we do now have to pay the bill, Deise, so be ready, but the track is done. Um, we are having some roof issues, um, at, um, a little bit at Housel today with that big huge downpour, we're, we're on it. The roof at, um, the old Crosser High School, especially on the flat, which would be the office area. So, we had, um, some crews there working with us to figure out what's, what's next, what we have to do to fix that. Oh, I see the typo. Anyone interested in seeing the, not track drawings, the tennis court drawings? I had track on the brain, I guess. Tennis court drawings, please contact me. The concept drawings are available for review on the ramp and the stairs at the Art Bike Stadium. And, um, I'm happy to say that the PHS cameras in the front of the building and at the back of food service are shortly to be up and running and moved in at proper height, and we'll be securing this building, um, as it was originally intended many years ago. We will do a media blitz, um, about that, so that families understand how you will access the building once the doors are secured properly and ready to go. Um, Noah shared about the gold soccer, football will be in Seela, just letting the community know that I will personally be there at that game um, in partnership with Mr. McCave, the superintendent in Seela, to make sure we, um, play nice in the sandbox. Um, leadership, uh, we have held our first district security meeting, um, last week, I, I, I have to tell you, it was pleasant and it was fun, and we got some, uh, some good stuff accomplished, but we are also continuing our meetings with the security officers every two weeks, and that's improving, and they're really putting their brains together and leaning into the work, and I, I'm really pleased to see some of the stuff that we're working on. Um, I've been attending the EST one twenty-three, um, they're called SAC meetings, Superintendent Advisory Committee meetings. Tomorrow, I'm going to the gear up meeting, um, and the community schools meeting, so I'll be for morning and an afternoon, thank goodness it's on the same day, so I only have to do one trip down and back. A fiscal, I'm gonna tote, um, compliment Deise again and her partnership with Craig. Um, and they, they noticed, they're both still smiling, they like each other, and they're getting a lot done. Um, I think we'll be saying goodbye to Craig soon. Um, Deise will be presenting the year-end report in November, uh, Craig's going on a, a well-deserved vacation, and then we will continue our mentoring partnership with him, um, as needed, in addition, as we see fit. One of the commitments that I have to the community and to you as a school board is we will monitor our fiscal responsibility very closely, and we'll make sure that those that are making fiscal decisions are well-trained to help us make those. Um, the other thing I wanna talk about is the district office, um, that's the Lori and Kim and Carissa and Selena and Sonia, um, I think, and Craig could say this, it's maybe, and Tammy. I think it's, uh, getting better every day, and they're working better and tighter, and under Deise's, they're embracing her and accepting what's going on. And I need some help on the levy, so if you're there, if you're willing to play, I've had two text messages today from people who are not on my list, so if you know anybody, I'd be willing to open my arms and let in and come and help.
Okay, Jason?
Yes.
Now, this is Jeannie, I don't have a report tonight, but I'm signing off and heading for the hot. Now, this is Jeannie. I don't have a report tonight, but I'm signing off and heading to the hospital.
Okay, well, good luck, Jeannie. Thank you for hanging on.
Oh, thank you. Bye-bye.
Any questions? I have one.
Okay, it wouldn't be Jason if you have a question.
Um, along with the roof issues at HMS, I know we're kinda limping the chiller along as well. Um, we probably need to have a. Mitigation plan at that, you know, especially as we get into the winter, as it gets colder, but especially as we come into next spring.
So I hope to be able to present a facility improvement plan. What to you, um, if whether it's December or early January and we are going to take a look at the whole entire facilities. New things, things that can be taken care of, how we um become proactive instead of reactive. And there are some um grants that we can apply for to possibly be able to do the chiller sooner than later.
Great news. Thank you.
Just a few comments. I did sit through the security meeting last week and lots of good information, lots of good problem solving, I think, and identifying what needs to be done. I want to thank everyone that spoke tonight, everyone that served on the health committee with a lot of time given and in time being, anyone volunteers and gives their time. That's greatly appreciated. I think it's nice that we live in a community, people are concerned that someone at the school or a student anywhere is taken away in an ambulance. And I would say um for tw- for twenty years, I've worked mostly in Benton County and now a little bit in Yakima County. And I read police reports all the time. If you wanna see the prevalence of drugs in our community and. Volume of drugs that are coming through our community, I would encourage you to go to your Benton County Justice Center in Kennewick. There's criminal dockets all day on Wednesdays and Thursdays and you will see the. Impact that drugs have on people's lives and how much of the docket is the crimes that are being committed are drug related. I think. You're not part of that and you don't see it. You just don't understand. It's just, it's everywhere and there's no stopping it. So what Noah had said is we have to be prepared to deal with it. We have to have the Narcon. You know, everywhere and be prepared to help people and give them the resources they need when they are available.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have a lot, um, just kind of sharing some of the same things that we've, we've talked or listened to today, but uh. One thing that I've, I've been debating over and and concerned about over the last. Couple of weeks or so is how, again, we live in Prosser as a community. We're all pretty much, we're family, I think. You know, we all treat each other with dignity and respect, but we're not seeing that with one of our faculty. In, in this school, so. Uh, I heard. Letters and stuff at their home and I just don't think it's right and I, and you know, I please, I would encourage. The community just to. You know, treat, treat everybody respectfully. I think it's important, so. That's all I got. With that. Future meetings uh will be November eighth, right here in the Prosser Library Workroom at six PM. If there's no further items. Thank you.